Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. Now I want to welcome all of you to the Los Angeles County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, June seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. It is nine a.m. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for an invocation by Commissioner Lucero.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your faithfulness and provision in our lives. Thank you for each person in this meeting and your deep talents and perspectives. We thank you for your opportunity to gather together and be heard toward a common goal in Jesus' name.
Please join me on a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ballot call, Mr. Lucero?
Commissioner Felix Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Tony Haas? Commissioner Robert Lucero?
Yes. Approval of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda at this time?
No changes.
Thank you. I will motion to approve the agenda as posted. I move to approve the agenda as posted. Second that.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes. And before we start this meeting, I want to... Mr. Dorian Camp, County Administrator and Commissioner Tony Haas are attending the Permanent Local Affairs Grant Meeting in Grand Junction. And so we had this meeting scheduled. I was supposed to be with the group as well, traveling, and we decided to kind of divide and conquer. And so that's where the Administrator and Commissioner Tony Haas are at. And so certainly they're going to be missed, but we will proceed with the meeting. We're going to go to Section Two, Consideration of Minutes, Special Meeting Minutes of June second, two thousand and twenty-five. Commissioner Lucero, we've had those minutes. And we also had the rescheduled regular meeting minutes for June tenth, twelve, two thousand and twenty-five. I make a motion to approve both of those as a consent item, two A and two B. A second that.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. Going to go to Section Three, A Reading of Correspondence, Commissioner Committee Reports. Commissioner Lucero, would you like to provide us a report?
Yeah, I don't have much this week. On the twelfth last week, I attended the World Hour of Youth and Veterans Day at the Serra Senior Center. They had a number of booths we were going to to address information concerning items that are available to the elderly. When I was there, they had a pretty good turnout when I was there. I started down at this step, did a pretty good job. And on the thirteenth and fourteenth, I attended the Saturday Trail Days up here this past weekend, which they had a really good turnout. That's all I report.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I can't hear. Krista, can you not hear this meeting? Okay, she says she can.
Okay, very good.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Lucero. Mine as well is going to be pretty short. We had a meeting last week on the twelfth. Commissioner Lucero went to the Senior Citizens Center. And I traveled to Quetlo for a press release on the opioid region nineteen funds treatment and so on. That press release, if you would like to see what information was shared with some of the vendors that are actually providing services to the nine county region as to what is it that we're doing as nine counties to continue to combat the opioid pandemic. It was very, very informative. We have all nine counties represented. And certainly was a great opportunity to meet with the press and to meet with some of the constituents and talk about what are going to be the next steps. One of the highlights that we put on that particular meeting, that the opioid settlement funds were appropriated for eighteen years. We are now entering into year three. We have sixteen years left of these appropriations. A lot of work to be done. We're going to be awarding some RFPs as we speak for harm reduction. That's going to be a conversation that we need to have as a community. Harm reduction means different things to different people. One of the conversations we're going to be having here in Los Angeles County involving public health, our director for both Los Angeles and Warford counties, as well as DHS, perhaps even the hospital, before we decide what is going to be harm reduction, what does that look like for Los Angeles County. So the conversation was very... The meeting was actually well-attended. We had quite a bit of press. All the media from Colorado Springs was present. And so it was an opportunity to meet with other counties, face the challenges together. Had a great conversation in Quetlo County, the city of Quetlo, as to what they're doing and creating issues. But this opioid pandemic, this is one of the facts that was so telling. There was a comment in there, the manufacturing of opioids throughout the world, the United States consumes the majority. That was kind of a scary thing. That what the other... Some people use that number of... I don't even want to give you percentages, but by the majority, that tells me that more than fifty percent of the opioids manufactured worldwide, they're consumed right here. So we have a big problem with opioids. And so that's bringing another challenge to our communities. We talked about the opportunities to provide housing and rehabilitation and so on and so forth. It's an expensive nature, and all sixty-four counties are working under the direction and appropriations of the settlement fund. So I have been part of this group since day one, and I tell you, it gets... Every year, it gets a bit more. The numbers, very challenging. However, what we heard is that the numbers of people that are in opioids is either flat or declining, which is a really good thing. Whatever that means, that was great news. The other opportunity that we're going to be having is there's going to be a conference. The Colorado Opioy Council is going to be meeting up north here in the next... I believe it's next month. So we'll be attending that conference, and at that conference, there is going to be national speakers. What are other states doing? What is happening? And so that's incredibly the topic and the theme of what is going on with the opioid, in the opioid world. And even at the National Association of Counties, I was looking at the agenda, and there is going to be a breakout session on what to do with the opioid nationwide. So this is a topic that is not going to go away, but certainly will be at the table on behalf of our constituents here in Los Angeles County. And that's going to be my report today. So today, I'm also going to invite any elected official that might want to provide any updates. I see someone in the audience that perhaps might have something to tell us. Good morning, Mrs. Ramado.
Good morning, everyone. How's everybody today?
Great, thank you.
Good. Well, I wanted to give you all an update. As you know, Eagle View pictometry was flying the east part of our county. They wrapped that up at the beginning of June. So we do have some preliminary images on our system currently as we speak, but in about forty days, we should have the entire deliverable package. So I'm sure we'll be seeing those bills, and I'll get those forward to Ms. Cobrely. But we do have updated imagery, so it's twenty-twenty-two on our western end, I twenty-five west, and now twenty-twenty-five, I twenty-five east. So it's a wonderful tool, a great product, and it's just provided... I can't even begin to tell you the amount of data we've been able to collect and how useful it is. We're coming into fire season. It has proven itself time and time again, and then hopefully the rains continue and we don't have any fire season. But pictometry is wrapping up, and we will have that close to us. We just wrapped up our protest period for our twenty-twenty-five regal. We are over five hundred protests to my office, which is considerably down from our last protest period in twenty-twenty-three. So I will be working those, but I did want to put it on the board's radar. The County Board of Equalization hearings, they can start appealing to you by July first, which doesn't make any sense because I don't send out the notice of determination until June thirtieth. And as we all know, our mail system does not work that fast. So according to state statute, you have to end all of your hearings for real and personal property by August fifth. So as soon as I get my portion of the project done, I will get a list to Ms. Paula, and she will start, hopefully, if anybody appeals to the County Board of Equalization, we'll go through that process. And Ms. Nelson, if you have questions, please reach out, and we will get through this. I'm hoping I can handle most of them at my level, but we'll see. Is the taxpayer's right to appeal to my office? And then if they do not like my decision, they can appeal to the County Board of Equalization. And the notice of determination will have all of the directions and deadlines and how to handle that process on the back of that notice of determination. At this time, that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Incidentally, also, it's used for public safety.
Yes, it is.
That is made benefit to the county at large.
Yes, it is, and I appreciate the commissioners and the county being able to get us updated and to treat you.
Thank you for the updates.
Thank you.
Anyone from the Clerk and Recorder's Office? The Treasurer's Office? Anyone from the Sheriff's Office? District Attorney? Orner? Hearing that, it is a great pleasure to welcome back this morning a former county commissioner. He'll have a presentation on the Front Range Passenger Rail. Commissioner, former Commissioner Chris Lopez has been working with this project for probably from the inception of it, and now he serves as the representative for the region. And great to have you here this morning, Mr. Lopez, and thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of this part of the state when it comes to this passenger rail system.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, staff. Good to see you. Counselor, Mrs. Ramado, I spent eight years with you guys, so it's good to see you. I miss you, but I don't miss the stress. I am your Representative for the Passenger Rail. I've been on Board of Directors since two thousand and twenty-one in its inception. And I was re-elected as the Treasurer of the Organisation. And so, to kind of give you guys an update where we're at, Centerville twenty-one-two thirty-eight with the Front Range Passenger Rail has gone through a lot of changes over the last couple of years with the Centerville one-eight-four-two thirty of the pass last year and those funding mechanisms. The initial route, and still is, the overall route from Fort Collins to Quetlo, based upon a federal grant that we received for our service development, which encompasses the NIPA studies. That's why it was identified as one of those main areas. That was put forth by the Southwest Chief Board of Directors before our inception. So we are looking forward with that, with CDOT, and continuing on that. But the governor and legislation implemented one-eight-four was developing about sixty million dollars additional dollars for a segment to coincide with the RTD in the Denver metro area to Fort Collins. And through the vote, we rerouted it from Boulder to Longmont, due to a county request to be taken out of the rail jurisdiction, which was done so a couple of years ago in Clintonville. So now we're at the phase now where we are negotiating. Matter of fact, today I've got a little call on the clock for a meeting on the IGA with the different partners. It's getting a little cloudy, but we are working it through with all of our legal counsel right now. A month ago, it was difficult to digest, and as of this morning's reports I've got, it looks like the negotiations are really working in favor of every entity, which means we'll still be available to see a train south of Quetlo in the Los Angeles Warford County. Representing you all for the council of governments who's appointed to that board, I really am trying to keep an open mind to protect the taxpayers of Los Angeles and Warford County. However, don't want them to build a missout in the opportunity of having transportation through the train for the remainder of the next fifty to one hundred years. The benefits outweigh the expenses at this point. My opinion, and I think moving forward with the negotiations today will be beneficial for Los Angeles Warford County in the future. So that is coming up today, and then next Friday, we'll have our board meeting with twenty-four board members. It's really difficult. Seventeen are voting members, so it's very... Tough to make concessions, decisions together collectively. However, with those seventeen voting members, I want you Commissioners to know in the City Council here in the city of Trinidad Warford County and in Wausau, that every board member supports Front Range Passenger Rail to train. We have the Chairman of the Board, Chris Nebbitt. We have the Longmont Mayor, Mayor Peck. And we have those Northern County representatives supporting all of the train. So three years ago, four years ago, when we were first having these meetings, there was a lot of discussion on who can repay and how to repay from the north, can repay from the south. And by this, that is gone. Our Northers, our Northers in the light, Northern Star is Centerville twenty-one-two thirty, and they designated in the packet that I sent you guys, from Fort Collins to train. And then north to, in the state, from that, upstate, to North to Fort Longmont. So we're in a better spot today with this negotiation. We'll find out with our attorney on the clock. But we do have the support of the entire board, which is great. And there's some really great people that work with Front Range Board. So to have that support to come all the way south to Trinidad is pretty phenomenal. And for us to have that influence on that group is something really great. Now, the monies that are going to be funded for the remainder of it, I mentioned before we started meeting today, about three point two billion, three point five billion dollars over the next twenty years is probably going to have to be raised through a ballot measure. Sales tax has been contemplated on what type of dollar amount we're looking at. We're probably looking at about point zero two tenths of a penny, very minimal, which will equate to about twenty-five cents on a hundred dollars to fund that. So we've got the traction to get that accomplished. However, we are waiting for this first segment to be completed in order to fulfill a promise from the Northwest Rail, or was it carefully the neighborhood that the Denver voters voted on, and they never got a train. So from a political perspective, the thought process is initiate this first phase, never in Fort Collins. Then we get the promises made by the taxpayers and their taxing entities that they've done, and then we fulfill the obligation to have a train to that. The thought process is at that time, we'll have the support for a ballot measure once we complete that first segment. Now, what's the benefits of those folks up there? They're going to have the train anyway, whatever they hope for. But it will increase the amount of trains a day. So right now, we're looking from three to five trains a day from that, from Denver to Fort Collins, with the implementation of a sales tax, we'd have all trains a day, or not one. And then that would also bring them south. So that's the whole plan. That's the overall perspective of this. And right now, we will be starting on today. I'm going to make a recommendation to my executive committee for an expenditure of one hundred twenty thousand dollars for a consultants firm that we've been using for the next phase of stakeholder with our community members, with our city council, with the county commissioners, to start a large campaign to not reintroduce, but bring back to the spotlight Front Range Passenger Rail because we've been kind of dormant, we've done different polls and polls and studies and what we've been doing with the dollars to accomplish and have some hard numbers we go to the voters to lead. So I've got a recommendation today that the executive committee on the floor will take us to the entire board. And within probably within three months, we'll have representatives of Front Range Rail down in our area, up and down the entire board, coming in and talking to you guys with all the details because these folks are just neck deep in it every day, all day long, and give you some more concise information and hard numbers and some timeframes for what we're going to do. It's been an honor to serve on this group, and the true honor is to build these relationships. You've always heard me say that more brains are smarter than we want. And I get to work with some really great people up there doing this, and to see the support of Los Angeles Warford County is amazing. So if you have any questions?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you because Boulder, as you know, at CCI, Boulder has not been really abused with the fact that they had an initiative, like you said, twenty or so years ago, and it was pretty much a different tax, then nothing happened with the projects from that around. Maybe a recommendation, not necessarily, but if you were to get all the counties that are within the route together through CCI for kind of a presentation to all of them at once, I think that would be fantastic. Specifically those up in the beginning, I mean, early, going to Boulder, El Paso, and so on. I think that would be really beneficial to provide this whole thing. I'm looking at the schedule, by the way, thank you for sending this information. By the end of quarter three, your team will have the financial information ready to go. And by the end of two thousand and twenty-five, the final report as to the next steps, it's pretty much inclined to move forward. So by two thousand and twenty-six, is the ballot initiative considered for twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Good question. So with the thought process of being, we have to show a train operational to the voters of the Denver metro, where the majority of the voters of this district would be, where we would need to have support to pass the ballot. The thought process is having a train implemented. So having said that, we're probably only five years from now before it is operational. For number one, the rolling stock is quite three years out to be purchased, unless we bring in an operator that has their own trains, you know, the rolling stock and roll motors. So that's the biggest hurdle we're going to have is getting operational. And then also the positive train control, initiating all of that for public safety. If there's any byways or bypasses for freight, we need to negotiate that. So overall, the study, the service development plan was due now in two thousand and twenty-five. The CDOT, that's in their control, so CDOT is handling all that department. And then with this other folks, so we're looking at two thousand and twenty-five. So back to your question about ballot, about twenty thirty, we possibly could train. We're going to have a discussion with the executive board and strategically plan. If the governor's office thinks that a ballot measure will pass, and say the train is operational, what do we do? Do we push it at twenty-six or twenty-eight, or wait till the train's running in the third? So that's kind of where we're at. Now, the document that we're creating right now, the IGA, is going to be a living document. So as we implement a ballot measure, a successful ballot measure, then the IGA will be able to be adjusted and manipulated because at that time, the Front Range Rail will have the authority with the funding mechanisms. Right now, it's just the Centerville one-eight-four-two thirty, if you're willing to ask, which is controlled by the government. We don't have any of the funding ourselves to assist in that. But once we have that funding available, then the succession plan will probably take place, the Front Range Rail taking over that whole portal and doing the entire region. So when's a successful ballot measure? That's a magic question, right? They don't know. It's going to take probably some polls to figure that out. Last year's poll was sixty-three percent in favor. We did one poll, and the government requested another one, and it came back at fifty-two percent. So it's just too much of a small margin of success that we chose not to write ballot measure twenty-four. So that's kind of the holding matter. But my biggest concern is for this Southern Power Run. It's not the Denver area. As a board member, if we're going to be taxing, if we're going to be taxing these people here, then they better have a train, or they better have a projection of a train, what a timeframe is for. And that's what I've been pushing this whole time, is to make sure we represent the people of all the taxpayers with... We don't have another voter. We don't have another... We taxed you, we never got a train. So in the ballot language, is... And I don't know how much longer I stay out. I've got another four-year term on that board. Who knows? The council of governments will point someone else to that word when my term is up. But to protect that, so whoever is you or yourself becomes the council of government's appointee, or Commissioner Haas, make sure you keep that in the back of your mind, that for a ballot measure language, to be a successful ballot measure, we need to have timeframes in that language of when a completion will be scheduled for this region of Colorado to have a successful... But it also ties them to the Front Range Passenger Rail, will tie them to having a completed under the ballot. So make sure whoever succeeds me in that keeps that perspective on and on that for the language of the ballot. But we don't know for sure. We'll have more of a clear answer in about three to six months when we start doing it.
In other speaking, the understanding of our county and this South Florida. I'm going to do an infomercial for the Passenger Rail system here. If anybody's interested in finding more information, go to frontrange.com. And I'm looking at that, and one of the great things that they put in here is that depending on how many trains are going to be riding in the rider ship, there will be between nine hundred thousand to about one point two million people a year that are going to be using this. And they even break out the per-mile rate. There is one recommendation, nineteen cents a mile. It'd be worth for me going to and actively in Denver from Los Angeles County, nineteen cents a mile, round trip. I don't have to pay parking. I don't have to do... I'm just getting here to central... I'm in Union Station, and I'm right downtown at Denver. There's a lot of information, so it is right at thefrontrange.com. And one of the great perspectives that they put in here, also the estimated financial cost, between three and three and a half billion dollars, which is a lot of money. As Commissioner, former Commissioner Lopez says, you know, this is going to be twenty years, perhaps more, who knows? But nonetheless, I don't have any other. I just want to thank you. And again, keep up the representing this part of the state. And yes, we don't want to be taxed if there is not, never going to be anything for Los Angeles County. So thank you. Thank you very much. Good to see you guys. Thank you so much. Have a good day, and come back anytime. The next item that we have on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone? Do we have anyone online that would be interested in using this moment to address board committee commissioners? We have three minutes. Public comment. Hearing that, we're going to go to unfinished business, Section Eight. I believe consideration of revised JBBS contract, the Turkey Health. This particular item was tabled at the last meeting. So at this time, Commissioner Lucero, I will entertain a motion to remove from the table. So I second that.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes. And I'm going to look for counsel. There was a paragraph in there that we were looking at the Sheriff's Office. We had a question on the first page, paragraph four. There were two different financial numbers. There was a financial number in... Spelled out with a number in parentheses that did not coincide. Counsel, would you please correct it?
They've been corrected. I'm sure you should.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate that. So that was the only question that we had at the last meeting on this particular agreement, that the amounts were not coinciding the ring format with the number format. So at this time, I will entertain a motion, well, I'll make a motion, since we don't have Commissioner Tony Haas, I'll make a motion to approve the revised JBBS contract, the Turkey Health. Second.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Now we're going to go to new business, consideration of HUP two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero three extension. This has been requested from Harold Soller, L.C., and I believe... Good morning to both of you. You can use either one. Are you logged into the...
This is him?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And license here. I always decide to not recall your name, so if you...
Sorry. May I just first do the technology thing?
Yes, very good.
Kind of that working. I was disabled participating.
We need your help. The gentleman that was going to help me is not in the audience. I just... I'm sitting at Texas City Theater.
Yeah.
My slides are not critical.
We'll wait a couple of minutes. We have to ask, I have a couple of questions for you as well. We have to ask, I have a couple of questions for you as well.
I could get started. I'm gonna tell you.
Okay, hold on. Go ahead and if you wanna get started, that would be, uh, we got...
Oh, it's him. Oh, that's your boss.
I heard my name. He just started.
Uh, he's, he's supposed to be here. Just here.
You should be able to share.
Yes.
And if you want me to hear remaining in the audience, we might have a question for you as well. Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh, so my name is Randy Kennard. I'm with Corcel, Corcel Energy, and we are helping Dr. Barr's solar storage project. And then I've got my colleague Allison Hill.
Welcome to both of you and good morning.
Thank you. So, um, as you noted, the Barr's Solar and Storage Project received an SEP from this county in February last year. It was actually March. Uh, and we are here requesting an extension of the permit, uh, to help the commissioners evaluating our request and spend a little time talking about the progress we've made over the last year, kind of all the work we've done developing the project. And then talk a little bit about why we're excited about continuing to develop what we've been planning for the coming years. But to start off, I thought I'd take a second and kind of explain what the project is just to sort of refresh regulations, um, so you guys have a little bit of context. Um, so the project is, um, 150 megawatts of solar and battery energy storage located on about 820 acres of land, 17 miles worth of this electric. Uh, the project will generate enough electricity to power about 13,000 homes that can to tri-state transmission grid in the area. The battery will allow the utility to take the solar energy from time shift to use it when the utility needs it most, which then helps, you know, synergy reliable in the region. Um, the project's been designed to include a number of features that in the end kind of environmental impact it has. And it has estimated to have about $21 million economic benefit for the community. A couple of things to note about it. First of all, just make sure we're all centered. The solar is standard solar panels like you see up in those houses. This is not the, um, solar tower that uses the mirrors and points sunlight on the tower. Kills birds, and that's not what we're doing. Standard solar panels. They are bi面 facial, meaning they, um, collect sunlight on the front and the backside, which makes it more efficient. And then the battery is the same kind of, with the iron battery, it's used in electric vehicles. They, uh, test. Uh, and then, uh, instead, the project will connect to a tri-state transmission line that runs across the property, which means we don't have to load lots of new transmission lines for this project. Uh, the, it, it's estimated to produce about $21 million of benefit for Los Angeles County. That comes from first, is about 300 construction jobs that would be required. Those are of course temporary, that is, you know, the three people that are to work for a little while on the project. In addition to a number of clinical subcontract, so, um, civil work, landscape, defense, contractual, or security work, um, we always try to find local firms to contract with because it helps the community. And it's sort of better value for us on construction side. Once the project's built, we'll have three or four, um, ongoing jobs, which are for asset management, you know, it's for people that are able to respond to a budget, or basically, that pays out 200,000 dollars a year, which, like, eat my calories of life in the project. Um, and then, of course, there's property tax, which is estimated at $47,000 a year to, like, the project's about $16,000 tax rate. Uh, and in that, in addition to that, we have a number of indirect benefits that we've seen our projects have in communities, such as, you were saying, hotels, restaurants, shops. Not to mention our culture. Um, the project also is designed with a number of, what I think are pretty cool features that help, uh, the environment. So, um, kind of the way we look at it, once we're done, we've actually created kind of nature preserve. It's about 800 acres of land set aside by natural vegetation, for and for, or so. What we do is install panels on elevated tracker systems. It's not the fixed tilt systems where there's like a big cage built. Instead, we set these posts in the ground, about 25 feet apart. You see the little video, it's kind of clunky, but it just kind of shows what it's like. Um, we set the boat, we set this post with a crossbar between the posts, about four feet of panels are set up there. And we leave, um, the ground largely unreserved. So we'll come in with native education and, uh, pre-seated, but the people will go home. So the local vegetation is all game, and do whatever they want. We operate about 30 of these across the country and they flourish. In addition to the racking system, we space the roads about 10 feet apart. So, um, that's large enough for birds to come in, to food, and actually measure the sand till cranes, which are six foot means specifically, you know, they've gone from front of the air. Um, we use panels that, that utilize anti-reflective coating, um, just put into the solar panel. That eliminates the pulverized light pollution, which is, things possibly, I totally understand. But what it means is insects and birds are gonna fish back to you to the solar panels, you know, to use it for water, um, you know, you know, get confused or blind ones. And we also have a native vegetation, noxious weed management system. So if we disturb the ground, we reseed the native plants, but we actively manage for noxious weeds and sure, nothing takes our control. And the vegetation is open. We use wildlife, and the fencing machine is really cool. Um, it's, uh, it's kind of like the wildlife fencing museum on the Highland, but the wire mesh has bigger spaces down at the bottom and then tighter spaces higher up. But that does, if that allows, that allows us to manage smaller, to pass through things down there, but it's still strong enough to keep people, other than you have. And then, uh, the project is, we have a little notice out to claim that, but it's very low noise and it's got very large sound levels. Uh, it's dark, it's dark, it's... So that's a little bit about the project. Next, we'll talk about kind of our progress, but if you have some questions?
I do have a lot, thank you. First of all, thank you for being here. I'm gonna kind of, uh, go a bit on, uh, I like your concept of, you know, standard food space. And for food, I, I think that's pretty much, is that standard for the industry, for free high?
Yes. Well, it's becoming standard. It's not, it hasn't been, the reason why I like to talk about that is the first sort of generation of wired solar farms use fixed tilt. So they build kind of this reflector set, kind of structure that held panels at an angle, um, permanently. And then what that will do is it would create this kind of shade box below it and so like everything would kind of die. I've had hours using this tracking system. It's supposed to be here and it moves. I've actually got a little video of how it moves. If you can see, it went on right there. That's a time lapse of how it was structured in. So then that means pretty much everything below the panels gets sunlight. Um, yeah, it, it helps us collect more sunlight, make more electricity, but it also means you don't have this like dead zone of shade or...
Are they set up to work, like, are they high enough for an animal? Can you give them their grades?
An analog, maybe, we haven't measured that one. I was gonna show you this graph, um, where we measured our cranes. So cranes are typically three and, three feet, 11 inches tall, so they can just barely fit, um, without having to duck down. I don't know how tall they are, but they...
I know, I go to the LRC, so I, this was a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they did a presentation on solar systems. It's a group where sheep, I can be over, they're setting solar panels on top of them where, I mean, cattle can graze under. And I'm not sure if that's, I think there's been use in the meat places.
We, um, sheep, sheep and goats are fairly, sheep and goats are fairly common. Um, the, this Spanish, Spanish project here uses a lot of shit. Maybe grazing or cows, we're not a big fan of, because cows are bugged into the animals and it can actually cause damage. Um, but we have a different project that we're developing that has a lot of meat on the side. We've actually been, um, evaluating that. I, I feel bad, I don't know how tall they are, but I do know that they're able to kind of drive and don't create much damage to the system. Um, so we've been looking at sort of fencing, whatnot, the cows and animals.
Are the panels manufactured in the USA?
Um, we are working on that. That's a, that's a constantly moving answer. Uh, we currently have a supplier relationship from a company out of India, but we're building a relationship with a company in Canada. And then there's a new company that's just over the plant in North Carolina. They're, um, known by a Vietnamese company, but they're making them in, uh, North Carolina. So the law is just changing, but as long as we're allowed to buy from the North Carolina company, we'll probably ship to them.
So I don't know about the supply chain looks like, but you know, one of the, one of the, as we're going through this process, since 64 counties in Colorado, one of the things that we're looking at is the earth, where earth materials are in mind throughout the world. And a lot of those are in mind with, uh, you know, exploding choke. That is one of the footnotes that we keep talking about at the national level, at the state level. And I just wanted to highlight that because, uh, I know there's a lot of negotiations. And it is my understanding that, uh, if every part of a solar array plant is manufactured in the United States, perhaps the company's getting more credits. Uh, and so for that, again, we already have a project that was approved in March of about 2024. And so certainly we're here just to hear about the extension. But thank you for expounding on to the, uh, the entire project. When you talk about batteries, are these capacitor type batteries that you can transport the power from point A to point B? Or, uh, we had, about a year and a half ago, we had up this center here, and I believe the company was in Houston. And one of the things that we learned at that time is that a capacitor actually can actually store so much power that they were running a well there out of this tiny little thing. I mean, and they run a well there for about an hour. I mean, you're not gonna pay that amount of energy that was stored in that unit. And so, uh, are the batteries and capacitors, do they have the capability of, uh, being transported, if you will, from say, Los Angeles County to another county for consumption of energy?
No.
Okay.
If you mean, can we pick up the battery and drive it?
Yeah. No. Okay. All right. And, uh, the, uh, I think at the end of the day, I really like the perspective that you're putting in here. The regulation process makes it that much easier at the end of it. If, uh, from the, from the industry, you have many projects throughout the United States, can you just highlight to us the regulation process? You know, one of the, uh, one of the initial concerns that I personally have been talking about both at the state and national level is I don't want to see a barnyard in a state desert place just piled up with these solar panels that are going to pretty much disintegrate. Who knows what's gonna happen to the, uh, to the ground, the waters, and so on and so forth? What is the regulation process, I think, about the project to recycle the materials to include removing any toxicity that they may have?
So, um, it's, it's fairly straightforward. Um, the, let's, let's first talk about the solar panels themselves. Um, I don't know if you can really see it, but the, the black part of the solar panel is, um, it's kind of like siloed silicon that takes sunlight and converts it to electricity. Spits out basically electrons. Um, that process, that sort of like chemical reaction of sunlight getting to siloed and spitting out electrons, happens for years. There's panels that are, that were installed in the seventies in central California that are still operating today. They're lower efficiency, but they're still operating. So, um, these, these panels, they don't disintegrate. They just get lower and lower efficiency. Where at a certain point, kind of that would sense to put a new panel there and keep selling electricity. But the old one is still good. And so we've actually recently been in talks with, um, a nonprofit that's taking some of our damaged panels and, um, sending them to the Dominican Republic to, to create these kind of like village community solar systems where they're, they're basically using, um, lower efficiency or damaged panels and kind of reperishing it and using it there. So the panels continue to have value. And so, um, 20, 30 years from now, when we were, if we were gonna decommission the project, um, we would take the panels down. And then there's, there's E ways to be recycling programs you could use, or you could give them to one of these nonprofits that use the panels somewhere else. Um, then, once the panels are gone, you have why, what's left is wire and then this, this metal back in the system. So both of those have a pretty good resale value. Um, and so, uh, unlike a well where you have this huge monstrosity, you know, of steel built and a big pit in the ground, or a coal miner that's big open pit, you know, you have to seal it off and remediate. We don't have, we don't have that kind of impact in the first place. So we don't have that kind of remediation required. And instead, we just disassemble the racking system, which is take this, take the wire off, take the, um, crossbar down, which just is disassembling this hetero here. And then you pull the post out of the ground. The posts are also 11-foot steel posts that are driven into this web. So you pull all those down, um, and then, um, you have several thousand small holes that you fill in, but they're, that's it. Like, there's not, not like a mine, a cap, or anything else. It's just a bunch of holes that you kind of fill in. And then the, the racking equipment itself has a pretty good salvage value. So you just collect all that, sell it, sell it.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, good morning, Mr. Robinson, I, uh, I want to...
Could, could I just, for a moment though? It's interesting that you raised sort of domestic content and supply chain issues. So I was going to talk about this when we get into our progress, but that was actually a huge part of what we were doing over the last year is the project that we had proposed. And the equipment that we had contemplated when we proposed this project last March, we had to basically spin back and redesign it. But the project itself stays the same. But we kind of looked at the macroeconomic issues, the supply chain issues coming. We looked at the equipment that we had, we can't, we're not comfortable using. And as we had inverters from China and a few other things. So we redesigned the equipment specs to use, inverters that are manufactured in the US. We switched from the Cowen battery storage system to Tessa, which is the most viable, most reliable battery storage provider. So those are some big shifts. That took a lot of work on our part, but we did not get any issues or.
Thank you. I'd like to connect with that side of the problem. I was going to show you because I was going to ask about, who is Bill Worth on the letter that you sent to San Luis County Land Use Department? Sure. And I was going to ask the question, did the project change in scope? And the project kind of remains the same movement, remains the same perspective. I think you brought some more positive perspectives and valuable things to the landowner, to the surface and perhaps even the minor rights owners. So from that perspective, I, you answered my question. I have to answer it. So the footprint doesn't change. The specialists doing Mr. Rogan has not changed anything of this whole. And so let me ask you, what is it through the letter? I went through the whole process. Are you asking for a twelve month extension? Is that what we're looking at?
We would appreciate a two year extension if, if possible. But if I could, you can just explain the timeline and what we're working with that ruled and just pass the commission for what it feels is appropriate. But what we had accomplished over the last year is one of the big things that we were on is a large study with Tri-State where their engineers looked at the feasibility of connecting this project to the lines that they have on the site. That study process takes eighteen months to complete and it's broken up into phases. You have to pay a couple hundred thousand dollars to each phase. So we went through all three phases, got to the end, we got kind of nice results. The good news was they determined it was feasible to connect our project to their lines at that location. The bad news is they said that it would take until 2029 for them to complete their portion of the work that they need to do for us to connect the system. We originally, they originally said 2027, so that's kind of what we contemplated around which location. So, so now that we've redesigned some of the equipment and whatnot, we're going to have to go back through their study process. And that's going to take us another eighteen months. And then, once we get through that, we don't expect the results to change. The 2029 deadline may go to 23rd, but that, that's not, that big of a deal for us. But once we get through the new study, we'll then put down the deposits, supply the equipment required to build the project at a credentialing study here, to get here. So then, once it arrives, then we can work on site. So we would be working in the background a lot, investing lots and lots of money over the next couple of years, but we wouldn't begin work on site until probably 2027 to 2028. So our request is for a couple of years because it is, it does create risk for us to get, you know, kind of like if we were in a point where we're putting down deposits on equipment and then we have a risk that we can get permanent, like non-standard insurance in the next couple of years.
The, so right now we are in a resolution 24016 for purposes of just internal conversation. I'm going to, at this time, I think personally, I'm going to have to push this item. I'm going to make a recommendation, perhaps Mr. Lucero, as he has worked in the land use department. I want to make sure that I have the ability and capacity to go the twenty four month. I want, I want to make sure that I'm, that I'm staying within also the stated regulations that we have written for the county.
I understand that. I do want to just make sure and say, happily accept one year if that's all you guys are being able to grant.
And, and from my perspective, once again, to go back to the statement, my, my comment is if you have the capacity to work for months, certainly I, I don't see any, any harm from that perspective. I want to make sure that Mr. Rogan and Commissioner Lucero and council, I just have that question. And so for that, I don't want to see, yes, let's go ahead and do the twenty four month. But I can tell you one thing, I personally want to commend you for the work that you've been working locally with manufacturing. And who knows, by the time you get there, what technologies are you going to have, you perhaps you have the capacity to double production with the same technology that you have. If you wouldn't mind at this time, I think, unless you have any additional information.
We do have one request.
Yes.
So we did, we didn't want to come into this here and interrupt, but, but we did want to ask the process for potentially extending the battery to, it's currently designed to be thirty megawatts. We were wondering if it can, expanding capacity to be ninety megawatts. That sounds like a lot since three times more or two times more battery parameters than original. The footprint doesn't really change it. It adds a couple acres. If you look at our design, the battery is kind of right here. It becomes a little bit bigger, but not, it doesn't, like in the grand scheme of this whole project, it adds a couple acres. We didn't know what the process was for that.
Okay. The, once again, thank you for bringing that up, but that gives us another point in our conversation. And I know for the, what the battery storage, the, one of the recommendations that this board has done historically is to have accessibility for firefighting mitigation purposes, whether it's whatever the chemicals are needed to suppress any type of fire generated within the facility. That would be one of the things that also would be part of the, part of the conversation. I may know that you are the, the whole idea. So if at this time, I think, Mr. Connor, I think what we'll do is unless Commissioner Lucero has any additional questions, I am going to, nonetheless, we're going to make a decision by your own will. And I am going to make a recommendation at this time to lay this item on the table and move it down to executive session. Commissioner Lucero, unless you have any opposition to that? That's my motion. I will second that motion.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. And so if we're going to executive session, we'll automatically make a decision with the clarity that we need to have. I want to thank you both. Thank you.
We stay here?
You can absolutely. No problem. All right. We're going to go now to nine B. Consideration of O P C C number seven zero three three, a treasurer's purse for twenty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Do we have the treasurer aligned? Commissioner Lucero, do you have any questions on these, or I?
No, I'm just curious if these remain as certificates for like leaving, for these leaving the county?
Right. There is a note here that these are, they're needed, I believe.
It looks different.
It should be right.
In my time in the, in the treasury office, a lot of times there's these pieces of property restored to the, to the tax sale. And they're really not big enough to do any of that. As far as building, they may give some value to adjacent property.
The, the statement that the treasurer sent to us, the following schedules have been donated to Las Angeles County farm in Mary Ann Sullivan on eleven thirteen two thousand and four. So I would think unless we have our assessor in the room still, I think they will remain now as certificates or by the county. I would reach out to you, ma'am, and say if you can put the spotlight on this.
I can give a little bit of information without actually seeing the documentation. If they were donated to the county, then we should have a deed transaction. There should be some sort of document coming from Ms. Sullivan to Los Angeles County, either the treasurer or the county themselves. And then my office would transfer that ownership to Los Angeles County. And then, like Commissioner Lucero had mentioned, possibly they could go for a public auction or something to those adjacent landowners. But I'm hoping there's some sort of title work or chain of title or some, some legal document that states Los Angeles County is now the owner of these parts of property.
Let's see here.
I think it would be my recommendation that you have the treasurer here because generally I have seen where people have donated property to the county, but it is through a deed document of some type.
And the only thing as we mentioned here, the statement on page, on, on the page here speaks to the donation from the Sullivan to the county.
Right. And I'm not a legal expert, but I, in my assessor's opinion, I would be very cautious to accept that without some sort of legal deed transfer. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much. We have a young student, a recent graduate in the audience that I also present after her.
Well, thank you. I was going to mention this in my comment, but we have two interns again this summer. So I have two, one is a graduated senior, one is a sixteen year old who attends Primero. She's not with us today, but they are interning in our courthouse and we are willing to share. So if an office has anything that they need done, we will be sending these young ladies around. It's always an honor and a privilege to show them how local government works. And I hope, so far I think they're enjoying their time and seeing how serving the public and how local government functions.
Well, this is one of my, welcome and thank you for your presence.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's cold in here.
It is cold in here.
It's chilly.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Lady, for, we were going, we're addressing the item that the O P C C treasurer's purse of twenty-five thousand dollars. And on your documentation, it says here that Ms. Sullivan donated these properties to Las Angeles County.
Correct.
And, and I just want to make sure that the deeds, the deeds of these properties will reflect in fact that they're going to be, they're going to become part of the inventory of San Luis County.
Yes, they're already getting recorded because they're already on the tax roll, I believe, I tell you. I haven't checked.
Okay. All right. So I know you clearly stated that the following schedules have been donated to San Luis County farm in Seattle. We appreciate that. But as going through there, I was looking for something that Ms. Sullivan, that's something you have already taken care of a little bit more?
Yes, I believe I have the book of pages down there. If you want copies of these, I can give them to you.
Yes. Very good. I think we, with your statement and with the documentation that you have in place, that was surprising. I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege right now. I'm only engaged from the general agenda and congratulate you for forty-six years of service to Los Angeles County.
Thank you.
And you have announced your departure from your position as the treasurer and public person.
Yes.
So, Mr. Lady, we have, this board want to say thank you for your service. And I don't know what the next chapter, but I'm certain it's going to be a whole lot more fun and less stressful when you turn the cap. On behalf of all of Los Angeles County, I want to say thank you, thank you for your service to the position. Forty-six years is quite, quite the trajectory, but I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to, to congratulate you. So we gave you an opportunity to get the answer to this and thank you for this, Commissioner Lucero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Having received a verification, Commissioner Lucero, so now I'll enter a motion.
I will approve O P C C for number seven zero three three, treasurer's purse of twenty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
My second motion.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Second, we're going to go to nine C. Consideration of Model Water Uses Association in care of San Luis County letter requesting an extension to C D B G project twenty-four dash five hundred. So what as information to this, Commissioner Lucero, the, the letter was due sometime last week. Administrator Doran Cap signed the letter. And so today we are going to be approving the, the extension of the grant that was requested, signed and approved previously by Administrator Doran Cap. Any questions from you, Commissioner Lucero? All right. So at this moment, then I'll make a motion to approve the Model Water Uses Association in care of San Luis County letter requesting an extension to C D B G project twenty-four five hundred. Second.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Now, consideration of the F A A signature for grants and signing authority. This is quite, I think, exciting. And I want to ask a question about finance director over there because according to, to this whole thing, it's going to be one of those documents signed opportunities rather than circulating a document in whichever format we have done it. So any, any conversation, any comments from you?
No, no. So I just asked Mr. Fernando, you know, O P C C, so you have copied the contracts for others.
Absolutely. If the, if the person with the money is not in the circle, then we're not, we're not going to be there to care. Commissioner Lucero, any questions? No questions. I will enter a motion.
I want to approve the F A A's signature for grants and signing authority. I second the motion.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes. We're going to go now to financial matters. Consideration of April and August, first half of June, two thousand and twenty-five. Finance. financial record recovery.
Payone is a June 15, 2025, is $227,426.71. Do you have any questions on Payone?
No, ma'am.
I can go, this is Payone, June 11, 2025, $303,488.21. And the packet I brought now to, let's see, CDR Associations. That is the final request for the Spanish translation grant. Some of that, the final request on that. Let's see, Quota of Pass, I guess the end repeater, the one out. That was for $12,456, maybe. The election grant, she purchased a couple boxes, nevermind people bought more pump boxes, for $8,679.78. The runway status for the airport, they actually paid for that, that was a grant. We only had to pay, I think, 10% of that, so it's $3,000. We'll be reimbursed for that, runway stats. And then the judge's bench, I think that was, this might be, I think they sold under the podium, but this is the final part of the judge's bench, a $5,616,51. I think there's any, any, yes, which have questions on?
No. I was, as earlier I mentioned, there was one here for GMC operation for $141,000, but I have identified an option.
Commissioner Lucero, any questions?
No question.
I will make a motion to approve the bill sent in April for the first half of June 2025. Second up?
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. At this time, we're going to, the board is gonna meet in executive session. In matter of counsel, I'm gonna ask you, we, executive session, we're gonna be, I'm talking about item A, ATY officer, and item B, consideration of A should be 2024-003, extension request from Carol Stoller LLC. And I know, I should know this by heart already, but I don't want this one board in there.
Please, 24642, or need to bring the county attorney, the officer, the state attorney.
Thank you. Yes. And so at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to suspend the board count of commissioners and going to executive session with a small recess. So, second, let's see here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes. We're gonna go into executive session. We'll come back with a decision, actually.